Okay, thank you. I'm gonna recognize Alderman Coles and then I'll make the motion. Alderman Coles?
All right, I don't know anything about Limo Polo Plumbing, but I do know Nero Brothers did all the plumbing work on Iroquois and Montclair. And I can verify them guys working, because they knew what they were doing. Since they did that area over there, we haven't had an ounce of water in a retention pond, which we floated for years. Every time it rained, we had water in the retention pond. There's no water in the retention pond. Whatever they did plumbing work and changing pipes, excellent. So, I asked Gary to tonight that I would give him the $50 to get Nero to work on that plumbing job, and he turned me down, because they do a good job. And the foreman that's in there really knows what he's doing. His name is Tony. He really knows what he's doing. And as far as I'm concerned, he's the guy that should be doing the job. But, as they say, you're supposed to take the lowest bid of 50 bucks a bucket. I know. You can't buy a tire for $50.
Mr. Home?
Yeah, just to clarify, we're required as a municipality to take the lowest qualified bid. And that's the big word is qualified in there. And that's where through municipal references, we can make that determination.
All right. Okay, so then, I'm gonna... Mr. Home, would you be in agreement with me making the motion for Neroi Brothers, subject to the recommendation, the references?
You put it aside.
No, if you're gonna make a motion, it would have to be a motion for Lino and Polly, subject to recommendations.
I see.
Or you simply table the measure until... We can table it until the committee on the 25th.
Can I make the motion? I got a...
Why don't we just table it?
I'm okay with making the motion. I think we can... And then, we would have the references by next Thursday.
Yes.
Okay. I'm gonna call in Alderman, please, then I'll let Alderman Wesley make the motion. Alderman, please.
Being new to all this stuff, just a question. If we know that Alderman Coles says, I guess Neroi Brothers was the... He was probably one of the subcontractors, because I think Dunhaman was the actual contractor on the Iroquois/Montclair thing. I mean, if we know this guy has done good work for us, which was basically a year ago, we don't have the option for the $50 to hire this guy? Is that what I'm hearing? Is that right?
It's my understanding is we have to award the lowest qualified bidder. And that's again, a question for legal counsel more so than your...
I didn't know, I didn't know. I mean, $50, like, you know.
I know.
I got the 50 bucks now. I can give it to him now?
Alderman Wesley?
I would make the motion that we hold off awarding this contract at this time until we get the references, until we seek legal counsel on this decision. And hopefully, for Thursday night's meeting.
Mr. Home?
The manager reminded me that next Thursday's meeting is canceled anyway. So, the 25th is gonna be a combination committee/council meeting. So, perhaps, maybe you could, maybe if you would like, you could table it till the 25th. We're not, you wouldn't discuss it or vote on it until the 25th anyways. That way, you could come to the committee on the 25th for your discussion, and then immediately on the 25th, you could do it at the council that night.
I'm okay with that. Okay. Does a motion or amend this motion to that?
I amend my motion to that, because I forgot about next Thursday. Yes, I amend that motion, but let's go forward.
To table it to October 25th committee meeting?
Yes, provided that we have the documents that we are requiring and the legal counsel advice.
Okay, and then I second it. And the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item is an update on the Emerald Ash Borer newsletter, and we did receive that in our packets. Mr. Home, did you wish to comment on any part of that before we go to the next item? Okay, thank you then. Is there any questions on item number 11, Emerald Ash Borer newsletter? Okay, then, that item is for information only. The next item is item number 12, mosquito abatement report, August. And I do have a comment on that report, that it's just a little, it's a little too vague for me. And I tried reviewing it, and if I'm looking for a certain area in Wooddale, and I want to understand the treatment patterns, I really, I don't find that I can focus on what kind of measures were taken in those certain areas. I would think that Clark should have more detail for us. At the top of the newsletter, the update, it says City of Wooddale, like it's made for us, but it's just too general for me. I really don't like it. I spent some time looking at it. Normally, I can put the pieces together, but in this case, I mean, there is a little bit of detail specific to Wooddale, but a lot of codes and trying to connect the dots, and I never really see the map here. At one point, we had a map and where they sprayed, but this to me... Mr. Home, is it possible to get more detail on this? Mr. Home?
Yes, in prior months, they always had more detail. You're right, August, for some reason, is only four pages long. I think what happened was, they got inundated there, and then they got swamped, and this is the result, a fairly quick report. I will certainly make requests of them that in the future, in finishing reports for this season, you have more detail.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Shawaki?
Yes, how many sprays or how many treatments were they supposed to do for the Wooddale in the air?
We got away from that approach when we, actually, last year, we got away from that approach. There used to be the approach that we have, that's around six applications a year. But when we went last year with Vector, and now this year with Clark Mosquito, we got away from their approach, and we're doing our spraying based on trap counts and based on the mosquitoes in those traps. And we're doing it based on basically science now. So, this year, we did sprays when the trap counts were elevated, and we needed to do spraying. We didn't just go out and generically do spraying. We did them when we had to do that.
How many?
I believe we had two full citywide sprays, and several specific, like specific sprays this year, like along the creek, along the forest, for sure. And that'll be summarized for you in a finishing of the report.
Thank you.
Alderman Lewitin, did you wish to be recognized as well? Okay. Okay, no, I just wanted to make sure. I thought maybe... Okay, Alderman Wesley?
Gary, we never did get that last spring in, because of weather change, right?
Weather, yeah, weather. It cooled off, correct?
I just wanna make sure we... Okay, thank you.
Okay, then, that item was for information only. Item number 13, items for future meetings. NMA Fleet Efficiency Alternative Fuel Pilot Program. The Clean Air Council Committee has been working on recommendations, and we're really excited to bring that one forward, along with the other item that Alderman Coles had stated on his items for future meetings. Item B, ordinance revisions, private improvements within public ROWW. Item C, Parkway Tree Ordinance. Item D, Storm Sewers Detention Ordinance Revision. Item E, School Street Pond Project. Item F, Annexations Phase Two. Item G, MFT Audit Results. Are there any other items for future meetings? Alderman Wesley?
I have one item added. It could be down the line, I don't care. We recently received a list in our package of items that city council need to take action on. I'd like to just revisit that list and see what action, I mean, what we have done so far. I noticed one was, and that list was the senses, which we are moving forward that. You know, let's... It just seems like there's been a lot of projects that we made a motion to do, and it's on a backburner and all that. I wanted to clean that up and see what project we need, make our action on. I mean, we should have received a couple of weeks ago that list from the city manager. Staff is waiting for action on some of these projects, and I think we need to give them what direction we're going, because the list just keeps getting longer and longer.
I'd like to add it to my committee, if everyone would agree on that. And then, Mr. Home, would you be okay with that as well, or do you feel it should be somewhere else?
I don't know that I'm familiar with it. Their manager will have to comment on it.
Yeah, I thought I gave that out to staff as well. There were some, there were some topic areas that council has to give us some direction to move forward, and there were some, there was a whole list of projects that staff is working on. And, Mr. Home, if you recall, you did participate in that list, and I'll make sure that everybody's on board, and... Because some of the things we are working on, but they're on hold, waiting for the council to make the next step. And so, we'll have that for you in a... This was additionally for information, to get this to be discussed before the committee and the council. So, we'll follow up with that.
And then, we'll add it to this committee?
Yes, any items that we need to add on there, we will do that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other items? I make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? And the question, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We got one more. We got another one. I would like the secretary to note that 87.5% of all the members are present, and that we do have a quorum, and we may continue. I declare that we have a quorum. The first order of business would be the, would be now to approve the minutes of September the 27th, 2007. Second? All those ayes?
Aye.
Any nays? So, we recorded that it's approved 100%. Reporting a recommendation, the train station. Just a couple of comments I'm gonna make first is, last time we had a session, we had an ad hoc vote, a non-binding, just a vote, just to see where we stood. And it was evenly divided between fixing up the train station, putting in a new train station, and I would accept either one if it was really good. And I was really surprised to see that number three had two votes. So, that means to me, we're really divided and haven't come to any consensus. The next thing I would like to note is that about three months ago, we declared a moratorium on discussion on the topic. We are now past that time, so it's time to pick up and resume our discussion on that. And I have good fortune to report that city manager Frank Williams will give us a presentation on where we stand, where we should be standing in the future. But Frank, I'd like to ask you to also make a comment on these two pieces of paper that you added to our general knowledge of train stations that we haven't had a chance to review yet. I'd like to give the floor to you. Are you ready?
Yes.
Then, it's all yours.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman Lewitin. Because one of the topics regarding the train station was funding, is funding, what I did was, we went back, if you recall, and we had the discussion about grants and grants available. So, I again, in your packet, made available to you that overview memo explaining CMAC fundings, and the letter from Metro saying that there were, there were not any more funds available for Metro stations, and they suggested to go to CMAC funds. Well, we did, we did more research on CMAC, because it didn't appear, if we looked at the last three years, that they did fund any stations. And if you look at your list, I highlighted those that were close to it. So, tonight, I went, or yesterday, I went to the website, and I downloaded the program description and the criteria for a CMAC grant. And there are seven criteria, and the rehab on our train station does not meet those criteria. In addition to that, there was a specific memorandum from the U.S. Department of Transportation, and that's the one page that was up there, and I'll just highlight that. This concerns the eligibility of transit station rehabilitation for congested mitigation and air quality improvements. That's CMAC program funding. Skipping to the second paragraph, they talk about that the guidelines deny that you can use this for routine maintenance and rehabilitation of existing transit facilities. They are not eligible. So, that's in the first paragraph. Then, you go down to the fourth paragraph, and they talked about this case, and the one they did approve was when they enlarged the train station, they added parking, and that was the only time that it would be eligible for CMAC grants. So, I wanted to make that clear. Because if, for example, tonight, you decided to go with one of the two proposals of the two train stations that were already approved by Metro. One train station is about $1,003,000, and it's a little large. The other station is $800,000, and it's a little small, so that would have to be enlarged. Then, you would have to direct staff, if you picked one of these, to go ahead and have someone look at this and size these according to our site, which, according to Alderman Kedala, would cost about $10,000 to $15,000, roughly, in your estimation. And then, we would have to have those plans ready and submit that for a CMAC grant in February of '08. But I just wanted to present to you some information which would indicate that wouldn't probably happen. But that is an option. So, we're back looking at, again, under this committee, looking at the options of possibly going out to bid and looking at rehabilitating our existing station with the funding that we have available. And it was also pointed out, again, by tonight, reminding me that although we have collected about $300,000 for this rehabilitation for the train station, we also have some additional funding coming in. And Alderman Coles reminded that when they start getting occupancy permits, we're going to bring in another, I believe, $50,000 from the Gagliano project. So, we'll have about $350,000 of our own to work on the station rehab. So, with that, I'll turn it over to the committee for discussion.
Thank you for bringing us up to date on grants, even though the prognosis is very dire for us getting any, which means we have to work with our own funds. I just... You know, it's hard to pick up from a state of confusion. And, you know, based on that last vote, we had not just a division, we had no consensus at all. I'd just like to start from the end of the table and move from left to right and get feedback. Alderman Coles, if you agree, would you speak?
Well, the proposal, the first proposal that came in was $600,000, and we turned that down. That was one of the things that we did turn down, because we didn't have the money. And the way, if I remember right, it was the way it was conducted by the engineering firm who was going to get the outside construction outfit, but they didn't want to be liable for whatever they were doing. But they were gonna collect such a, the money, they were charging us a certain amount of money for overseeing it, but they didn't want to take the responsibility in case the subcontractors did something wrong. We also had to take out liability on the subcontractors where the engineering firm did not want to. So, that was the reason that I turned it down. I also turned it down because we didn't have enough of money to pay for it. Now, as far as I thought, that we had some money for lights, to put up some new lights, and that they were gonna rebuild the whole station. Now, if you want to just remodel the station, we have enough of money to do that. We could also increase, put a new roof on. We could increase some of the length of the outside and put some more heat into place, and sort of clean it up and get rid of that old... I don't use it, but I said, somebody said that the tile inside was kinda old fashioned. I mean, we're trying to find something modern. The outside could be changed, and still have the same superstructure, still could be there. Now, as I said, I'm not an engineer, but we do have $300,000. And a lot of, the lights make a lot of difference. New roof makes a lot of difference. Outside appearances make difference, and also inside. And people that use it every day, some of them don't even want to go in the station. They stay out of the station, even when it's raining. You see them standing up there in the morning, they won't even be in the station. Now, as far as I'm concerned, remodeling would be fine for me.
Okay. I want to thank you for the remembrance of what went on before, because I think that it's very good to remind everybody that a lot of the opposition to the first program was not the building, but it was the insurance requirements that the general contractors wanted to throw on the city, instead of assuming themselves. They wanted more of the reward with less of the work towards the harvest. And I want to really thank you for reminding us of that, because that helps put the whole problem in perspective of where we got into the problem. Alderman Winger, you know, I'm just thinking, you know, you were with Streetscapes and all those beautiful statues for the park on Irving. And I'm just thinking, could some money like that be diverted into the station where you can have some of those type of ornaments incorporated with that money? You know, like divert one or two of the... What are they called? Sculptures. The wind sculptures moved over to the station.
Oh, I think that would be a great idea, that I know Streetscape had proposed them to be by Shorty's Triangle, and I'm guessing along the tracks there, because I know that triangle itself is pretty limited in space. But it would be nice to use some decorative, also by the train station with the tourism... I believe that would come out of the tourism fund, to provide decoration in next year's budget, that sort of thing. Or are you talking about the seven that were just passed?
Either way. I mean, the seven, I thought about it after we did it, could be a little crowded in that small space, but if we've already authorized them, could they be, and I'm asking this as a question, could they be added to the train station? I mean, not on the train station, but near it as you approached it, part of the walkway, someplace to add, you know, site appeal?
And then, there would be curving around them, so people wouldn't, like, go real close to them, but it would have a nice circular barrier, and maybe three of them, or we could work out the details later. But I would ask Mr. Manager, since the direction was already given, is it still feasible to move some of them?
We are planning on doing landscaping around the train station. You have, the council has already approved putting the new lights on the platform. So, we're in process of going out to bid for that. So, we will have lighting there. But you're absolutely correct. There's many things that can be done to enhance that area around there. There can be more open space, there could be benches put there, there can be landscaping, there could be trees, there can be screening. And these were all envisioned for the future. We were gonna start out with the station, and then we were gonna add money as time goes on. And that is the plan. And Streetscape can pick up on that, because we did do the three triangles this year, and next year, we'll have some additional funding, and we can do something with the train station. So, that we can do, yes.
And then, my input on the topic, I agreed, and I continue to agree, that the $660,000 plan meets our immediate needs and is a viable option to move forward on. And it had the coffee shop potential there, within it. It had the bathrooms. It allowed us to eliminate the porta potties. What a shame when trains come through and they see the porta potties out there. We all have a commitment to growth, and this is a good starting point to have a nice facility for our new residents and existing to use. And an image, you need to start with an image. Although, if a majority want to update the existing and do the $350,000, $400,000, sync it into it, at this point, to do nothing, I feel is just completely counterproductive. So, I would also agree to update and to do the new roof, to do the inside, to do everything that we want out of that train station, to put in the coffee shop, the bathrooms for the $350,000, $400,000, and also get rid of the porta potties. And lastly, to wrap up with, the $350,000 from the developers, that should we go with the $660,000 option? I believe that there is sufficient funds in the reserves of that account, or are close to it. And we would just need to look at the financials, you know, a little closer, but I believe it can work. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Kedala, I will say first, I think that of all of us here, you have the most knowledge in reading plans, and so, you can give a more technical opinion of what's, you know, I guess what I could say is, how do we get the most for our money?
Thank you. Let me actually finish answering a question you asked Alderman Winger about the sculptures as the chairman of the Streetscape Committee. The concept was to put it on Shorty's Triangle, which actually, you wouldn't think from driving by, but it's a little over a half acre. And through consultation with the artist, we came up with kind of a collage of sculptures that work together and play off each other. So, the idea of the sculpture park kind of being in one place, they work together, I think that was, that was the concept as proposed. So, if we're gonna think about, you know, the possibility of either moving them later or repositioning them, the Streetscape Committee should be at least, you know, involved in that discussion. Also, one of the ideas was that these would be visible as you're driving by, and part of the problem with the Wooddale Train Station location is that it has a pretty poor visibility from any major road, you know, being tucked on the wrong side of the tracks, almost, quite literally. Next, let me, let me go into the discussion of those first set of plans that we got from the architect, KSA, I believe it is. There was a few things wrong with the proposal. One of them was the condition surrounding how this was going to be constructed with the architect as a construction manager, but not one at risk with the city having to take the insurance, you know, liability. With the problem that the architect blew the budget by, you know, by 2X, basically. They were trying to come in in the 300 range, and they came in in the $600,000 range. So, that led me to, you know, I was concerned that are these the right people to actually manage the construction and the costs associated with it? But even bigger than that, and I think that Alderman Winger is right, that the $660,000 price tag is something that the city could afford. We could pull some money out of the commuter lot fund, in addition to the 350 that we have, plus any other money that might come in, you know, over the next year or so. But my biggest problem was that it was the design itself. It was, it was still a low structure, almost ranch style, if you will. I understand the architect was given direction with, and he was supposed to integrate the design elements of prairie style. So, prairie style is kinda long and low, and he did that. But the problem is, is we're looking at the potential for B4, which would be increased density, which would be increased height. which would be increased density, which would be increased height, and that area is ground zero of B4. So, a, a one-story structure without a vertical element, that really isn't any, isn't much bigger than what we have now, with the exception of the, uh, of the covered wings on the ends, uh, just doesn't have that, that kind of significant wow factor that I think that if we're gonna spend a dollar on the train station, we really should, should push for. Um, so, so my problem was, my biggest problem was, was inherent to, to the design. And, and I think that was the architect's interpretation of what the previous city council was telling him to do. I, I think it kinda morphed. It, it went from a remodel to, well, it's probably cheaper to tear it down, to, oh, that, you, you wanna do some nice detail on it, and now all of a sudden, we have something that comes in twice as expensive as you wanted, and it still isn't gonna impress a whole lot of people. Uh, at least, it didn't me as a, as a student of design. What the architect did for us, though, is he added a couple of additional elements, a, a vertical element to the, uh, to the train station he designed as a future phase. Also, a kind of a disseparate, um, clock tower on a site, um, actually Christie's Triangle, to, to kinda give us some, some vertical elements, some punch, and bring attention to this. That worked nicely with his original station design. But the problem there is, by the time you add all this up, it came in over, uh, over two million dollars for all the pieces, even staggered out over a period of several years. Kind of a lot to swallow, and, and, but your still basic train station is a small, one-story, uh, low roof structure. Um, so, I'm, I'm not sold on, on the plans that, that we've got sitting on a drawing table right now. Uh, the next concept, possibility of remodeling, you know, what we have. I believe that, that the dollars available to us, the three hundred and fifty thousand, uh, quite possibly could take care of things like a new roof, possibly a, a new facade treatment, uh, and, and the inclusion of bathrooms, whether inside the building or a, as a piece off to the side, and then tie it in under a new roof that, that matches the old. Um, I, I think that three hundred and fifty thousand could, could do that. There's really no structural problems with the existing roof. Um, and there's no structural problems with the existing walls until you try to change the structure of the existing roof. One of the things that the architect was trying to do was come up with a, a timber, um, an open timber beam kind of roof, uh, construction, for a cathedral look to make it feel a bit more spacious inside. Uh, but, but the structure of the existing walls can't handle it, 'cause what you're essentially doing is, rather than the, the, uh, the weight of the roof structure, and then ultimately the live load of snow, uh, being distributed evenly across that masonry wall with a series of roof joists, uh, rafters as you have right now, every sixteen inches or twenty-four inches. Now, you're putting these, these major point loads every, I believe the plan had a, had a, uh, a structural member like every four feet. So, that's why those walls couldn't handle that. And that's where, that was where it was decided, well, we should tear it down, because these walls can't handle this roof structure that we're trying to do. So, if we remodel, we really won't be looking at the possibility of opening up that ceiling. It's still gonna be, whatever it is right now, a nine-foot flat ceiling. Um, but I think three hundred and fifty thousand could, uh, you know, kinda at least maybe bring that train station into the twentieth century, if not the twenty-first. Uh, clean it up, fix the, uh, you know, fix the functional problems with it. But we're still missing, we're still missing that, that piece of Wooddale that says to all, all the commuters, and even people driving down, down Irving Park Road, this is Wooddale, this is the center of Wooddale, we're proud of our town, and, and this is significant enough that, that we spent time and money, and we considered doing it the right way. So, that leads me to what I feel is, is the only right answer. And once again, maybe this is, this is just me being a student of design, but a, a train station that really says, hey, this is, this is great, this is something special. And, um, and, and the manager came up with some, some plans that were kind of within that price range that we were originally looking at. And you know what? And they both, they both lack that, that wow factor, too. Uh, one might be a little bit more easy to work with as a starting point, but it's still, it's still not there, and they're more expensive than that six hundred and fifty thousand dollars we were talking about before. So, I guess right now, my question of the, to Mr. Manager is, the concept of, uh, of the, uh, the CMAC, uh, grant, um, reading through briefly this information that you handed us tonight, the, uh, that a train station reconstruction could qualify if it is, in fact, a major reconstruction, and if it serves the function to at least potentially attract more riders and increase the ridership. Um, and, and I think that a, a really beautiful building with, with some, with some, uh, function in it that, uh, that would add to the ridership could help, too. The idea of the coffee shop would, would be critical, just to be able to bring people in there and have them maybe use Wooddale's train station rather than, you know, one further down the line. Um, you know, maybe even this thing could be big enough to have a, a mini mart in it, and, and there you go. I mean, we've just, we've just really given a whole bunch of, of reasons to, to come and use our train station. Uh, now, I know you say the chances are, are slim, but could we design potentially a train station around the CMAC, uh, list of qualifications and, and see where that takes us and how much money might be available that way? Or is that just a bad idea all the way around?
Well, I, I don't think I'm qualified to answer, answer that question. But based on the research that we did, some of the research that was done by the DuPage mayor managers, they made it pretty clear. Unless you're adding parking spaces, unless you're adding to the relief of congestion, um, what might happen act, well, I, I don't see how we're doing it in this particular case. They gave the case in, in, in the one, um, the one time they approved it was when they added more space to accommodate more passengers. We have not even used our, our allotted, uh, amount of space that we have. If we were going to, and if we, if we increase that, say, you know, if we increase our density downtown, and we start, and we need to increase the parking lot size, then we would, that would qualify. Uh, Rozelle did that. Um, they started out with a small lot, they put in, they got a grant for four hundred thousand, they increased their parking stalls. Um, then it would, it would count, then you'd need a bigger station, because the basic station is a transit point. You go through and you get on, on the train. Although, you know, we have quite a few people going in and out, it's not, normally, it's not used unless it's raining or in the wintertime. People might pass through, grab a cup of coffee, use the washroom, but it's not like we're going to increase the space. Again, if we added retail, possibly, but that wouldn't come under the train station. That would be adjacent to the train station. So, and that would probably pay for itself. So, I don't know the answer. Is it worth going out and, and getting the plans, getting them ready, and submitting the grant? Unfortunately, I can't answer that. That's gonna be a policy, a policy decision that's left up to council.
Well, I, I appreciate your candor in that response, and, and, and your belief of the way that, as the way that might go down. So, um, with all due respect to anybody that thought that might work, it sounds like it might be a pipe dream, I mean, a nice one at that, but it, it, it may not work that way. That being said, I'm still for finding additional monies and doing something really, really nice here. Uh, even nicer than that one point two million dollar, uh, station that you, uh, that you were able to come up with from Metro. Uh, and, and something more tailored to, to Wooddale and the site, and, and the prairie theme that, uh, that the council has been moving towards over the past several years. So, my strong recommendation is, uh, kinda move forward in a, in a different design direction, thinking on a, on a more grand scale. Um, and, and perhaps giving staff some direction as to how much money could be found over the next two to three or four years in, in, in future budgets, if at all, um, to be able to fund this thing. So, that's, that's what I'd like to see happen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Caddala, uh, is this possible that you're... That I'm not twisting your words if I say that you would be in favor of the initial pattern that, uh, Winger and Co- and Colts are suggesting, but you'd like to have a link to change it, to add on to it in, in the future? Go ahead with the, with the station on the small scale of about three hundred or four hundred thousand dollars for immediate fix-up, but do it in such a way that the roof is strong enough to support a second floor, or, um, you can expand outward to, towards Irving Park Road, uh, you know, the, to the, what do they call it? The depot parking, uh, the depot, um, shopping center? So that you could, uh, expand out, like, if you put the, uh, Alderman Winger said, put the bathrooms on the outside, or was it you who said it? You said it, okay. Build them as an annex, but build them so that it could be the middle of a larger building, so that when the money comes, instead of trying to change the existing one, because it's already gonna be built up, continue on in the opposite direction?
Uh, yeah, if, if I can pick up on that, uh, I think that's a possibility. Um, the existing roof structure and the existing building are never gonna support anything above it. Uh, I, I believe that to be true, from, from having looked at the building myself. So, it, that part of the building would always be essentially the same mass that it is now. But if, if, you know, designed properly, there's a potential to kinda, you know, go down the line with some additional pieces. But it would have to be done very, very carefully, such that when it is done at some point in the future, it doesn't look like that's how it got to that point. And, and the only way I would really support that is if, as a council, we, we, uh, we came to a consensus that this is the design, and whatever it costs over the next five or ten or fifteen years to make it happen, this design isn't gonna change, because then it'll compromise the integrity of what we were trying to do. And it'll begin looking like somebody's house who put an addition on, an addition on, an addition. Um, so, so I would, I would be willing to entertain that notion, but, but just to kinda restate, my, my preferred, uh, idea is to, you know, start from scratch, but, but to do it right. But I don't know how long it would take us to come up with funds to be able to do that.
Yeah, I, I see what you're saying. That way, you would have a concrete plan, you'd have your, your, your Christmas shopping list all laid out, and you'd start buying in July, so that down the road, by December, you've got it built. And of course, that's, what I'm really talking about is two thousand eight, two thousand nine, two thousand ten. But have a, uh, fund, a train station fund building up, so that when you have another three hundred thousand, you can begin the next, the next phase. But definitely, you need the bathrooms in the middle and the bathrooms on the outside. And, and now I think we're pulling the three of you together so that your ideas are linked. And now I'd like to go on. Uh, Alderman Shockey?
I agree.
Thank you. So, now we have, now we have half of the Aldermen in.
And what I, what I would like to mention, though, is that there's supposed to be a waiting list with Metro, a ten-year waiting list, that we at least put our name on that for the time being, and, and do the renovations and so forth, uh, planning to be able to add on later on. And maybe in ten years, our time will come when we can get a brand-new train station. But in the meantime, we should do something to fix up the one we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I'm in agreement with fixing up the station and doing some scape on it, landscape. I'm sorry, is it landscape? And that's not the right word. It's, uh, Streetscape. Okay. And then the landscape. Uh, one thing I would love to see for the station, 'cause I do go down once in a while, I use it three, four, five times a year. And one thing I know is it's damp feeling inside. And part of that is because in the winter, when I go down, and you're inside, somebody comes from parking their car, and they open it up, and it's cold. It gets warm a bit, then the next person comes and opens the door. Then somebody inside decides they wanna smoke, and they go outside, and the cold air rushes in from the other side. I really think that both sides of the train station need foyers so that the inside can have a consistent temperature. And that's my opinion. But I, I'm on board with you for, for starting out as reconstructing the train station with plans for an expansion and a beautification involving money from other sources, and also on a timeframe. That takes us to Alderman Police.
Me personally, when, when I, when I build something, I wanna do it right the first time. I could see us doing maybe two or three phases on this train station, get a design we like, do the initial work. It might be exactly the same size we have right now with bathrooms. Um, eventually, the coffee shop maybe could be added. But just from my experience, and actually, the building right across the street from the train station, we put in the original building with thirty-two hundred square feet. We put the addition on, was another roughly seven thousand square feet. That, the first building was built for the purpose of expansion eventually. Now, the new owner who's taken over that building has put on some cosmetic work, which may, I'll be honest with you, the building looks much better than when, when I owned it. I, I have to say, you know, our building was, we had some soffit and fascia and whatnot, but now they've really spruced it up, and they did some cosmetic work that just makes it look, you know, makes it stand out. I'm, I'm in favor for moving forward, but we should do it right. If it takes three phases, it takes three phases, but let's do it right. So, ten years down the road, or fifteen years down the road, we're not spending another million and a half, two million dollars to redo it. We can start with the six hundred thousand, I have no problem with that, as long as you're telling me that this other piece here might be another two hundred and fifty thousand. And it, and it doesn't have to be the following year, it could be in two years. And, and the third piece, I just say, if we're gonna do it, let's plan it right, and the chips will fall right into place eventually.
Thank you. Uh, I think, my opinion of what I hear is that you're, you're, you're most in favor of the way Alderman Caddala is planning it. So, the two of you are seeing eye to eye. You know, I, I think that's what I'm seeing. But now let's go on to Alderman Wesley. We're not gonna have a liquor license.
You know what? There's been a lot of talk about this. My concern is, you know what? I, I don't feel like piecemealing this thing together. One project there, one there. You know, if we're gonna do it, let's do it. You know, let's get off the pot and do it. Get in a different design, we got some more Metro designs coming in, am I correct, Frank? I thought they were sending us a few more. I mean, piecemealing this together, I, I just get, you know what? If the sense is it to build a new train station, then let's find the money and do the whole thing the right way, and not year by year piecemealing this thing. Because you know what? Piecemealing, the council changed ownership in, in the next two years, I may not be sitting here. You know, a lot of people might not be sitting here. And all of a sudden, we do, do this one piece, and then the new council says, oh, no, we aren't going to do it. Let's make a decision on this council. We go ahead and build a train station, or we remodel the thing, whatever we decide here, but none of this, piecemealing this thing together. Because this council could all change within two years, four years. This whole city could change then. And then we, it, that's the problem. We start a project, and new council comes on and maybe postpone the project. Let's do it or not do it. Let's make up our mind here, move forward with the whole new train station, or we remodel the whole thing, and that's it. None this year, this, two years there, make the decision. That's what I say, that's what I like to do.
Well, what I hear you saying is that if we can't afford it, the city should take out a loan, and go to one of the banks and get a five-year loan for, for the other... Basically, you're talking to, uh, a one point one million dollar building. If we got six, you're talking about getting a five hundred thousand dollar loan and spreading it and paying it back a hundred thousand a year plus interest. Is that what I hear you saying?
No, I'm not saying there's a loan. There's money available in the community parking lot. There's money we could take from this fund and do it.
Excuse me, but I haven't heard anybody ever say we had the money before.
Well, we don't have the money to do a hundred thousand dollar train station. I mean, a million, whatever, I'm, you know, twelve, eleven thirty, we're talking about a train station. I think the problem is, there may be money there. There may be money in the commuter parking lot fund. There may be money somewhere else. We, I didn't say go out and take a loan to pay for this project. I never made that motion, I never did consider that. I, we have not really sat down as a council to determine, do we do the research and try find the money in the budget down the line in the commuter parking lot fund, or do we, and you're right, maybe we do. But I don't feel comfortable of taking a loan out to build a train station. Before I take a loan out through... I take a loan out to a train station, I'm sorry, remodel it with the money we got, then do it. If we got the money to build a train station, a budget, find more money, or more money that we get in from developments in the near future here, then let's do it. But I am not supporting, I'm not saying go out and take a loan. I'm not doing that. You know, we don't know what the budget's going to look like next year. We know there's a commuter parking lot that we just repaved recently. We know we don't have to use that money right now. I mean, there's money, you know. I don't want to take a loan, and I guarantee you, I would not support a loan. But let's look at it carefully, decide we build a train station. Newsio, I see your point. Do piecemeal, piecemeal here. This council could all change. We could piecemeal this, and then it looks like garbage after the council changed. Let's, let's make a decision of taking the $400,000 or $300,000 that's there, or we go ahead and work some numbers and see what actual money may be available in the commuter parking lot fund, and see if we can move money out there to build this. I'm just saying, you know, this has been ongoing. We got plans, and we got plans and plans. You know what? When the guy came out here and said it's going to cost a million, he knew exactly what our price tag was. He failed us. I think we got enough people around here. I think we could actually design our own building, the way we want, and just have our architect go ahead and draw what our specs want. I mean, and come back with that way. I'm not saying go out, take a loan. I think we got to make a decision, take the money that we got now, remodel it, or look in, if everyone senses tearing that building down and building a one, then let's do some budget research and find out if the money's there. If it ain't there, then we remodel it with the money we got. But I'm not taking a loan. I guarantee you that.
Frank, having said that by the Alderman, I'd like to direct you to talk to Maggie Powers, to have her give a definitive statement for next, for the next meeting on the 25th of how much money is available now. Without, you know, if she can shift money or not shift, you know, the answer, I can shift money, and this is what I can come up with. This is what you absolutely have as a council, and no more than this, without going out for a bond. What is the maximum amount that can be reconstructed on the budget to answer this question? And then we'll take it, we'll take that question from there. Can you have a definitive report about the maximum amount of money available?
As far as funding available, there's a couple of different ways we can approach this. We can, we can use the commuter lot, which is what the money is for. We can use tourism funds, which, again, can be committed to this project or other projects, and also we can use the donations. But what we would kind of like to know is what kind of number are we working with ahead of time, so that we could, you know, we could target that? We have the funding. It's just how you want to get the funding. So, if we could, if we're shooting at, if you can give me an idea, are you looking at about a million, maybe a million, two, or something like that?
I think you hit the number right on the head, because that would correspond with the highest price diagram that you came up with from Metro, was a little over 1.1. So, ask her if there's 1.2 available.
We probably wouldn't have that much available right now. We could figure it out and project it into the future, you know, depending on how, you know, how we allocate the funding. But as Alderman Wesley pointed out, you know, we have a budget process coming up, and there's going to be a lot of priorities and a lot of things that are going to be, you know, have to be figured in on that.
This is not going to be a high priority, but we want to know what's left.
Oh, sure. We can do that.
What can be done. I know they're not going to break grounds to, you know, the weather's right. But right now, if we can know exactly, right, to the, to the $100, how much is going to be available without, without going into any debt, then we know, I mean, we know that we have so much now, over $300,000. How much do we have available? And then we can, from there, if we can't do his, I still favor what everybody else says. Get the best that you can now with integral parts for expansion. So, she can have it by the 25th? She can have such a report by the 25th?
Well, we did a preliminary the last time, and it was around $800,000. So, we would just update those figures.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Police, your comment, please.
If we're going to do it, let's do it right. Period.
Okay. Well, we've all put input into it. I don't know where to go from here. How do we decide? What do we do? Do we table this to the next meeting? Do we discuss it more? How do we get a consensus? Alderman Coles, do you have an idea how to get a consensus?
We should table it and find out how much money we got to do it, and then go from there.
Winger?
The only thing I was going to point out, I'm not sure how we got to the 1.1. Maybe it was a drawing that was presented from Metro, and, but did we really even look at it? That, is it that dramatically different than the $660,000 plan that had all the amenities inside and looked pretty decent? So, I just want to point out that there is a $660,000 plan as well to consider. Thank you.
You're asking my opinion on how we should move forward or end this tonight?
That's correct.
It's going to require future discussion. I think the manager has a direction. I'm going to kind of stand strong with Alderman Police, though, if we're going to do it, do it right. And if we can only come up with $800,000, that may not be right, but that's future discussion. So, shut her down tonight and future discussion on this, after more information.
Then I have, then I make a motion that we table this to the 25th.
Second.
How many ayes?
Aye.
Any nays? So be it. We continue on. Items for future meeting, a master developer scenario. And then I would bring up, anybody want to add anything else to the future list? Then I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Remove.
Second.
Any ayes?
Aye.
Any nays? This meeting is adjourned. You know, it's really hard to know how you go.
The $600,000 price is gone.